Good evening. This meeting of the Notaway County Board of Supervisors will now come to order. Mr. Bowen, will you provide an indication for us?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Let's go to the Father. Lord, again, we've come together and, Father, we just thank you for all the recent rains, Lord. It was much a blessing. And, Father, we know that many people lost homes in different locations, and we lift them up to you and lives as well. Lord, I do have a special blessing for Jack Basel. My understanding is he's not doing very well, and we just ask you for your great hand as a physician to touch him. And, Lord, now, we just ask you to be present with us, get our hearts ready to receive and listen to the public. And, Father, we thank you that they're here, but most of all, we thank you for the King of Kings, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and through Him we come to you. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we'll be holding a public hearing related to fiscal year 2022-23 budget adjustments. Mr. Costin, do you have any introductory remarks for us?
Yes, ma'am, Chairman. Members of the Board, good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. The Board conducted a work session together with the Commissioner of Revenue and considered alterations to the personal property tax rate of $3.65 per $100 of assessed value and the applied personal property tax relief of 36%. Ten alternatives were presented, and after deliberation, the Board directed staff to move forward to this evening's public hearing to consider a personal property tax rate of $3.55 per $100 of assessed value, together with an applied personal property tax relief rate of 45%. The Board, after receiving public input this evening, may act and implement this option for one involving a lower tax rate and companion percentage of personal property tax relief. The current advertised proposal will result in approximately a $717,000 reduction in revenue from that set in the recently adopted fiscal year 2022-23 budget. Staff identified those areas in the budget where expenditures can be reduced and included utilization of reserves. The Board increased the latter to a total of $203,276.62. At this time, staff will be happy to take any questions you have regarding the proposal before you.
Any questions or comments from Board members before we open the public hearing?
No.
No, just the same thing we said before. That's what we're here for, to hear what they got to say. And we got a lot of emails, a lot of emails.
And letters.
And letters.
All right. We'll need a motion to open the public hearing.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is now open. We'll be calling on individuals who have registered to speak at tonight's public hearing. Each individual speaker is provided up to five minutes to address the Board. Janet Benell?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm speaking to you about two specific pieces of legislation that have been signed into law recently in our Commonwealth. The first is with regard to the current discussion about the increased personal property taxes due to the inflated values on used cars and the General Assembly's House Bill Number 1239, which was signed into law on March 29 by Governor Youngkin, and reads as follows. "Authority authorizes localities to classify for rate purposes certain vehicles that, under current law, may be classified only for valuation purposes, including certain automobiles, trucks, motor vehicles for use by the handicapped motorcycles, mopeds, all-terrain vehicles, off-road motorcycles." You understand where I'm going with that. The bill specifies that its provisions shall apply only to taxable years beginning on or after January 1, 22, but before January 1 of 25. This bill contains an emergency clause and is identical to who? State Bill Number 771. This legislation passed both chambers of the General Assembly with bipartisan support and was created in response to the soaring inflation, which continues to create rising costs on taxpayers within our Commonwealth. Specifically, it allows and empowers local government to lower property taxes on vehicles by placing vehicle taxes in a different classification than the standard personal property tax. The bill allows these taxes to be lower than the personal property tax, but they cannot be higher. The legislation applies to taxable years from January 1, 22 to 25, as I said, which shows that our legislators at the state level anticipate these inflated vehicle values to continue to present a hardship to Virginians and have created this pathway for localities such as ourselves to decrease the burdens on Virginians. Governor Youngkin further stated that the purpose of the bill is to empower our localities to cut car tax rates and prevent huge tax hikes driven by dramatic increases in used vehicle sales, and that it is up to local leaders across Virginia to step up and fight inflation with real tax relief. State Senator Steve Newman of Virginia's 23rd District over near Lynchburg, y'all, shared that it's everyday working Virginians who are struggling, and what this bill finally lets us do is this: You have a car that's $10,000. Inflation drives it up to 14. This bill makes sure that your government doesn't get a windfall. While I respect the current discussion of the Board to reduce the rates another 10 cents, it does not address the still-high tax cost to the residents of the county, I urge you to consider the opportunity Governor Youngkin has provided and to act more proactively to further reduce the rates to diminish the burden. I urge you to be mindful that you have the power to adjust the percentage of car tax relief as well, which you have said you can adjust at higher as well. Numerous localities are working to reduce these burdens in ways and incorporate car tax relief percentage increases and reduce that personal property tax rate. Other localities are working to ensure that there is minimal impact. Some of those counties include Chesterfield, Hanover, Henrico, Stafford's, Pennsylvania, and Caroline Counties, along with various cities and towns. The town of Blackstone made a very taxpayer-conscious decision to adjust their rate so that taxpayers would not pay any additional taxes in recognition of the hardship on the citizens an increased rate would create. The second item I will quickly bring to your attention was signed by Governor Youngkin in April and which took place and was effective July 1 and is referenced in the Code of Virginia with the following sequence: 15.2-2511, "Return of Local Surplus Funds," specifically stating the following. "Any locality may, by ordinance, develop a method for returning surplus real or personal property tax revenues, or both, to the taxpayers who assess such taxes in any fiscal year in which the locality reports a surplus. The locality may reduce a taxpayer's refund by the amount of any taxes, penalties, and interests that are due from such taxpayer, or any past due taxes, penalties, and interests that have been assessed within the appropriate period of limitations." In short, this legislation directs counties to return surplus personal property tax revenues to the owners of qualifying vehicles. This was enacted due to record increases which were not expected when budgets were being drafted for fiscal year '22-'23. Henrico County in particular saw a massive increase in real estate and personal property taxes that, from an anticipated increase of 15% in revenue, jumped to 35%, and the county has shared its plan to address those surpluses by returning them to the taxpayers in the form of an overall reduction in personal property tax by 52 cents. By the way, what was the surplus this past year? Because I can't seem to get that information from anybody. While I am not a county supervisor and my knowledge base is small with regard to the management of a locality, I believe these items hold merit and provide guidance on where the Commonwealth itself collectively stands at present by providing this legislation, which specifically states that it is the responsibility of localities to not create increased tax burdens on its citizens.
Ms. Benell, I'm sorry. Your time is up.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we're not doing that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Can you wrap it up in 30 seconds?
I can wrap it up in 30 seconds. These two pieces of legislation were signed into law in response to inflated values and to subsequently ensure that localities will not be opportunistic in using these inflated values to stronghold Virginians into providing increased gains for their coffers. I respectfully request that you consider the tone that the state government has set for the localities when they wrote and passed these two recent pieces of legislation. Thank you.
Chris Page?
Hey, how y'all doing? Madam Chair?
Hey, how you doing?
Board members, thank you for allowing me to speak. I think everything Ms. Benell said is correct, so we should look into that. But on the other hand, I want to talk about the tax rate itself. According to Wallet Hub, which does studies on municipalities and their tax rates and how it affects your wallet, there are 27 states that offer personal property tax on vehicles. Virginia is one of those 27 states. Now, out of those 27 states, Virginia has the highest out of all of them of the average tax rate of 4.04%. Notaway County, right now, as we talk, is at 3.65%, which is higher than all the other 26 states in the country that have personal property tax on vehicles. So a citizen in Notaway County is paying higher than 95% of Americans in the country taxes on their vehicle. And I hate to say it, but they're not getting a lot in return for their money. We have a big bank, big reserves, no projects going on. Seems like every time the community comes for support, whether it be the friends at the library, or whether it be ponytails, they can't even get that funded. And the rate that you're about to pass tonight, if you're considering 3.55, still doesn't beat the next highest rate of 3.46, which is in Mississippi. Now, let's say the Board doesn't want to be in the top 10%. You don't want to have a tax rate in the top 10% of the country. You'd have to drop down to 1.8%. And there's only eight states over 1.8%. Notaway County is close to double. So whatever you decide to do, we've got to figure out why we are taxing the heck out of our citizens on their vehicles and why it's so high. The only people who could have a comparable rate to us are our neighbors in our own state. It's got to be looked at. It's just way too high. We're a pretty conservative county. Obviously, we need taxes to generate revenue and have services, but we don't really have a lot of services in this county. Why are we getting taxed like that? I mean, I can live in LA and pay less for my vehicle than we are here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the Board, and good evening.
Good evening.
I came here primarily this evening to simply support any decision in the favor of the taxpayer. But because you have raised me off of my couch and I'm here, I'd like to take a moment of your time. Now, I know there are probably just about everybody else in the county who will suffer a greater pain than I when it comes to personal property tax. But I wanted to share with you that I have an automobile that's 22 years old with over 400,000 miles on it. My personal property tax is increasing from last year to this year by 260%. That shouldn't even happen. I don't understand that. I'm dumbfounded by it. And I don't know that anybody can really explain that to me in a way that I can understand. 260%, we're talking about a 22-year-old automobile. Now, the value of the vehicle actually went down this year. How about that? It went down $152, about 20% of the value of the vehicle. It's not worth a lot of money. But with that decrease in value, my tax still went up 260% based on what is currently approved in your budget. Now, I don't have a whole lot of knowledge. I didn't do any research. I didn't put my nose to the ink. I didn't do that much, but I'm here. And I know one thing, and that is that one of your biggest obligations that you have, give or take, is to operate within a balanced budget. That's what you have to do. You do it, and I think from previous years, you've done that successfully. With the lower tax rate on personal property, you were able to operate in a balanced budget. Now, somehow, it was found, discovered that, hey, you're not charging as much as the state allows for personal property tax, or the discount that's refunded by the state to the county is not as much as it used to be. So now, we have an opportunity to generate a brand-new revenue, put together a budget. You have to expense out that new revenue, so you add expense items to your budget. You have to spend that extra money somehow. And I'm sure that you're proposing to spend it on items that nobody would object to. I'm sure it's reasonable. But by God, don't you think the people out here have been through enough? We don't need more help adding to our pains. And I'm speaking primarily on behalf of everybody out there that's got a $20,000 or $30,000 vehicle. I think you need to do something about that. It just doesn't make sense. Give that some thought. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief. Y'all knew I would be here. I love a good debate. I just couldn't resist. I had to come. I do, I don't envy y'all a bit, trying to do what you're trying to do. But I dug into, you know, I got an education on the PPTR. I pulled the state code on it so I could understand it. Evidently, it came into being in 1998, was repealed in 2005, and then resumed again in 2006. And currently, the state gives $980 million a year to be spread between the cities, counties, and towns. That was interesting. What was even more interesting was all the issues surrounding the percentage. And I said, well, I'm going to look it up. I got into the, looked at the county budgets all the way back to 2015, and the PPTR has been $1,49,790 every year since that time. It went up to 2020 because there's nothing else on the Internet about that. And something to remember, the property tax collected in 2015 was $1,564,000. I'm sorry, $1,564,331. According to the paper last year, the property tax collection was $2,392,159. Now, all this discussion about the PPTR and the tax relief, the average state reimbursement since 2015 has been 64.8% of the property tax collected. Last year, by the, what's in the paper, the rate was 43.8%. So really, it's not about the state's money. State's money's been constant all the way through. I don't know what it was last year because I was confused. People say, well, we didn't know anything about it. We've been knowing about this for years. It's in the budget. So everybody from the CFO, the treasurer, the Commissioner of Revenue, even the Board of Supervisors knows this. So it's not something we don't know. But to save time, if you take what was collected last year and you multiply it by 30%, which is supposed to be somewhere near where the rates have increased the values on vehicles, we come up with $3,109,806. Okay? Now, if you take the $1,564,331 from that, that means that the tax collection has increased by 100% from then to what you're proposing. You know, I had a good career, and I have enough retirement to absorb it, but there's many, many people in this county that can't. I want to ask a question. Has anybody's salary increased by 100% since 2015? Mine went to less than half. I retired. If you haven't retired yet, I'll let you know. It's going to bottom out when you do. So that's something to consider, and it provides a little clarification that the state's contribution never changes. So it is what it is. I don't know what it was in 2021. Judging from the calculations I did, mine were pretty close to the commissioner's, so I don't think it changed. So thank you for your consideration, and I wish you well in trying to figure it out. I do think that you need to adjust the rates proportionately. 100% over that many years is too high. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. I don't think I've ever had the pleasure of addressing this Board. The last time I spoke to anybody on this Board, an official, in fact, it was over 20 years ago at a Budget Committee meeting, and that didn't go well. Good evening. I don't have any figures tonight. I'm not going to give you any figures. Other people have. But every one of you sitting up there that votes for this budget knows you're robbing the taxpayers of Notaway County. It is that simple. There's no other way around it. Your budget, even with it dropping another 10 cents, still be close to $1 million that you're padding to put in your reserves. There's no sense in it. Like John said, I can afford the raise, but I don't like being robbed. So just put your thinking caps on. I know there's not as many people here tonight as I was hoping there's going to be. I was hoping the place was going to be full, but the storm came up. But it's no sense in that y'all sitting up there doing this stuff to us. As one supervisor that y'all have censured is trying to support the people, as another supervisor that's on the fence, I think, there's three of you that don't give a darn, as far as I can tell. So that's the way I feel about this. I don't like it. The people don't like it. And if it doesn't get changed, I know it's an idle threat, but there will be people running against y'all next time around. And to close, I just have one comment I got to make. I'm sorry. We all know of one public official that has trouble getting things out and has a lot of gas. But, Mr. Bowen, what you had quoted in the paper last week was one of the biggest gas I've ever seen. I hope you can accept that and learn from it.
Yeah, I accept it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Keller.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Long time no see. I've been being a good girl, taking care of my mama. But I had to come out tonight to beseech you to reconsider your proposed tax. It's just I'm dumbfounded how we can gouge this community, the citizens here, even more. The majority of this, folks, just like the fact-filled people before me, and I don't have a lot of facts, I'm glad they put them out there. The folks here don't have a lot of money. This is insane. And I ask you, in my email that I sent either, all of you, and the only response I got was from John Rourke. Thank you, John, for speaking up for the people. I ask that perhaps you consider reducing the rate to 3.35 and set 45% and withdraw the funds that exceed the threshold mandated to be held and reserved, using these said funds to balance the budget. And our seniors and others on fixed incomes cannot possibly absorb this increased cost. It's simply not ethical any way you slice it. Apples and oranges, but Blackstone's done it. Burford just did it. Notaway can too. You can't possibly expect the citizens during this season of economic catastrophe to cough up millions of dollars that will result in financial windfall for the county to be in turn used for pet projects. Now, granted, all across the board, the budget, we need money, especially emergency services. I've always said that. But I equate this to the T Act of 1773. The objective was to help the financial troubled company. Well, that company is county. In the county, everybody knows you're in trouble. The colonists were outraged, just like the citizens are now. So the T equals the car. But we all have a car, and most, every household is a two-income household, or those that not, there are two people that have a car. And then, if you're fortunate to live in town, you're going to pay twice. It's just, it doesn't, none of that boded well, and this isn't going to bode well. And I just ask you, seek revenue from other sources. Market us, for heaven's sake, with the economic development. No wonder we got financial troubles. You sold a piece of land for $350,000 that a year later, the guy turned around and sold it for $3.1 million. Really? And then, you market this animal shelter, I call it the dog hotel. I love dogs and cats. It comes out, and I quote from Miss Simmons, $450,000, and now it's up to $1.6 million. Come on, people. The poor folk here. I'm blessed. I have a good job. I'm a budget analyst accountant, but I have a second job because when I want stuff, I work for it. Not everybody's that fortunate. These old folks can't work. And I'm just asking you to please stop making decisions that beat the citizen's bank account to death and listen to them. And again, John, thank you. We know you got our back. The last time I looked, you weren't Amish.
Brenda Payne?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think this is the first time I've ever addressed anyone here. But I want to appeal to you guys' hearts because everyone else is talking about the numbers. Everyone else is talking about the rates, the past, but I want to appeal to your heart. I decided to run for a seat on the Town Council and crew. My husband thought I had lost my mind, but I want to help people. And I couldn't let tonight go by without coming here and speaking up for those people that I hope that I'm blessed to help. I'm extremely discouraged in the action or the lack thereof in reducing the tax rate. This county has a lot of elderly people, maybe I should say seniors. In my job, that's what I do all day, is help people that can't pay their power bill, that are homeless, that don't have food to eat. And I have come to realize, we help about four counties, one of them being ours. Probably about 40% of the money that we spend is for this county, to help them. These are elderly people. They can't pay their power bill. They can't eat. Most of them come in and bring me their income sheet. They get $800 a month, $700, $900. Their rent is $6, $6.80. I mean, they have like $100 to $200 to live for the entire month. They can't get food stamps because they might own a house. So they have to pick and choose what bill they're going to pay for the month. Some choose to pay their car insurance one month. Some people choose to have power, or they have to come to us because they don't have power. So I cannot even imagine. I've sat there and heard these stories. I have cried with these people. It brings me to tears right now. Their income versus their obligation is crazy. To do this to them is like the straw that broke the camel's back. They're not going to be able to handle it or pay it at all. And from what I'm understanding, we have extra money. I don't know how much, don't know anything about it, but I do know we have extra. And most of us, I'm not calling y'all old, but most of you are either a senior, almost a senior, I'm almost a senior. So we might be good today. Everything can change in a day, and you could be in the same boat as these people. Right now, yeah, I can afford to pay it. Am I going to cry all the way when I go to pay? Right now, yeah, I can afford to pay it. Am I gonna cry all the way when I go to pay it? Yes, I am. But there's a lot of people that can't do it. And I just ask you to remember who put you in your seat and try and think what is best for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Wright.
Hey. So, I'm concerned about the upcoming tax burden on me and my fellow Nottaway County taxpayers. Little story about a boy from Blackstone went to Nottaway Schools and started in business 31 years ago in Blackstone and he titled vehicles in Nottaway County. And as he grew and got other stores and other locations, even in other counties and other states, he still titled those vehicles in Nottaway County. And so, you know, seven locations in two states and so, you know, start adding that up, it's quite a few vehicles. So, I'm very concerned about the upcoming tax burden on me and the taxpayers here in Nottaway County. And I just ask you to do the right thing in reducing these taxes and just lowering taxes overall and I think it'll come back to you later. Also, I want to ask you to explore the other opportunities in revenue too, like in solar that's coming up, that every other county is doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, that concludes the speakers that have registered for this evening. Are there any other comments that, anyone that, Sean?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Obviously, I have nothing prepared. I had no intention of speaking tonight. First of all, I want to congratulate the folks that have come down here tonight. I want to thank them for coming in and actually taking and having the courage to stand in front of you guys and ask for something. For everybody that doesn't know, I'm Owen Campbell. I know what it is to sit in those chairs. I know what it is to try to balance making a decision that's best for the business end of what you're doing versus what's best for the individuals that you're charged with taking care of, so to speak. One of the problems that we've run into in the town of Crewe thus far is the timing of this discovery of the problem with the PPTR. Our budgets had already been finalized. Blackstone's budget had already been finalized. And now we've had to go back and try to figure out what we could do or what we couldn't do. And as you noticed, the only town that didn't get mentioned yet was Crewe. And we're still working on that. You know, we're thinking about leaving it where it is and doing what's right for our folks. And then taking the next year before we get back to budget session and try to figure out how we could adjust it then. But on a personal level, I hear what everybody's saying here. I have an elderly mother that lives in Nottaway County. She has a decent vehicle. It's one in those classes that is gonna hit the price point where this is gonna have the greatest impact on her because it's worth less than $20,000, but almost $20,000. You know, fixed income, medicine, six, seven, $800 a month in medicine. This is gonna cripple a lot of people here. You have the ability. You're sitting on $23 million in reserves. That is, I believe, Mr. Colburn posted, over 50%. When most localities are running 10, 11, 12, 15. You've got the funds there to equalize this. I was in the car business for a long time. This market will not stay this way. In 12 to 24 months, it's going to come back down. And when it does, it's gonna come back down drastically. And then we're gonna be sitting in this room again, talking with you guys on how you're gonna go back up on your rates. Because your valuation of your collateral is gonna, or of your cars, is gonna go back down. This is a temporary thing. I fundamentally agree with everyone that has stood up here and said to take a windfall on the backs of people when you're sitting on that kind of reserve is unconscionable for the people that pay taxes here. And I respect every single one of you guys up there. And again, I know how hard it is to sit at that table and look at the bills and look at the checks that have to be written and figure out how, given these circumstances, we're gonna pay the bills. Everybody here knows what's going on with Crewe and what we're looking at down the road. And, you know, there's plenty of sleepless nights that have been had on trying to figure out how we're gonna survive. The last thing that our individuals need, at least in our municipality, is to have to deal with personal property rates that are going up through the roof on top of other things that may be coming down the road. I would simply ask that you guys pay attention to where you are. You are a citizen first. You pay these taxes just like we do. Thankfully, like many of the folks out here and probably everybody sitting up on that panel, I can pay my taxes. Wife's got a good job. She makes lots of money. It's the folks that aren't and I just don't see how you can reconcile. I don't see how you can reconcile a $1.8 million windfall on the backs of the citizens so that you can have something that you probably could have had all along if you really wanted to, if it was that important. But anyway, I thank you for your time. I look forward to working with you guys more in the future and things. And again, I congratulate everybody for the courage to show up and stand up here and tell you guys how they felt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe someone else. Yes, ma'am. Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Connie Reynolds. Sean Hurt. It's good to see you all today. And I definitely echo everyone's view that we do not need to raise our personal property tax rate because we cannot afford it. But I also want to ask some questions about how we found this discrepancy and what we're doing about it as a discrepancy. In that I got a copy of the annual audit report for 2021 and it talked about that, first of all, our annual audit was limited in scope. And they did not opine on the financial management, financial management or... And quite frankly, we had a finding that should have been addressed. We had a financial statement finding. And the condition was the financial statements do not contain all necessary adjustments to reconcile to the county's internal documents to comply with generally accepted accounting principles. Okay, that was in 2021. And the recommendation was that procedures should be implemented for posting or year-end adjusting entries to allow for reconciliation between the audited financial statements and the county general ledger reports. And that we consider employing a government or county consultant that is independent of the county's auditor to assist in preparation of year-end working trial balances. And that you, the county agreed to this finding for 2022.
Excuse me, are you gonna be tying this into the subject of tonight's public?
Yes, because my question is, if we have a full scope audit, which we should have, after you have a findings such as this, maybe we'll find some other adjustments that come to, that are in our favor. Instead of just going straightforward to try to bill for this one adjustment that you found because you do not have appropriate internal controls over your reconciliation process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Who will need a motion to close the public hearing?
I saw a move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is now closed. I guess we'll open up for board discussion.
Mr. Costin, did you have a suggested motion for the board tonight?
Based on what was advertised? Yes, sir.
Do you have a copy that I could look at?
Sure. It starts in here. Again, it's based on what was advertised.
Right, right, okay. Madam Chair, ma'am. It is absolutely crushing to sit up here and hear the citizens beg us. So, I'm done hearing comments. I'm done hearing suggestions. Board members, I move to amend the financial year '22, '23 budget by lowering the personal property tax rate to 315 per 100 of assessed value together with an applied personal property tax rate relief of 45%.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor.
Second for discussion. So, give me the, going following what Mr. Keller mentioned to me. And I thank you, Mr. Keller, we gotta put our thinking caps on. Just wanna make sure what are we doing here? So, what is that number, John, if you don't mind? I didn't bring, I don't have that with me.
Actually, Mr. Bowen, the advertised rate was...
Right, you did this one here, right?
I went to 315.
Oh, not 335. You went 315.
Right, 315. There was a figure that I had gotten from the commission of revenue that at 315...
One point?
$1,027,000 in additional revenue.
So, you know, one thing that people, Madam Chair, am I supposed to speak freely just for a second?
Please, yes.
Okay, just discussion here. So, one thing, you know, some people calling us hoarders and other people calling us spender monsters and, you know, so we gotta be in the between here somewhere.
Right.
But what everyone has in common, from everything that I've gathered, they want that tax relief this year. They need it. And so, and I get it and I apologize. I was smiling, Mr. Keller, because my wife told me I was an idiot to make a comment like that in a meeting. My wife. So, you know, anyway. But what I was, you know, I think everybody realized what I was trying to get at. What everybody realizes is that when you buy a vehicle, you do gotta pay taxes on it. But you don't wanna pay that much taxes. That's the thing. And that's where I miscommunicated to the public and I apologize to everybody. So, but I do gotta put my thinking caps. Whatever we do, we gotta make sure we do and we don't lock ourselves in because, you know, I gotta say this, you know, the public has a short memory. So, if we ever kinda have to move back up with the tax rate, you'll forget what we did this year. You know, and I think about that and I'm not, I'm just being open communication, transparent to everybody how I think and how we're thinking here. And I understand that, you know, a lot of people, you know, and I'm just, let's just, can we, if we don't mind, and let's just take the election thing and just put it off in a box somewhere because we don't even know we're gonna be living in next year, you know, how things go with that. But I do wanna do the right thing for the public and I wanna make sure we do the right thing for the citizens that are hurting this year. And man, groceries have gone up completely and gas prices and it looks like it's leveling off. And the market might go the other way, you know, we don't know that. I just gotta make sure, and I don't know if that number in the reserves is right either. I don't think, I think I was mighty up high. But one thing that I was trying to do in reserves, because I know somebody, I'm looking for the younger generation to take my place. It's time, you know? And I think we need a new courthouse. We need new things and try to make a better place. But we gotta figure out, and I think Brian Wright had a good point, you know, maybe we need to look at the solar for another, for some type of revenue. We gotta figure this thing out. But let's forget about all that right now. What I heard tonight is they want tax relief now, right?
Loud and clear.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. I support you, John.
I had one constituent, I think Mr. Ball is here. And you said to leave it at the 60% that it was at until we can figure this out.
Yes, I think we need to be more committed to industry and jobs in here so people can make some decent money to pay taxes. We have a lot of elderly people in this county that are retired, disabled. And their income is, like the lady said, $800, $900 a month. How do you expect them to pay such an increase?
Right.
On automobile? I've got several automobiles. Both of mine's got 200,000, 300,000 miles on them. To me, they should never go up. They should be going down because they're ready for the junkyard.
Right.
But I think we need to stop and look at this. I mean, we're all human. Let's do something to do it right.
We knew it. I was thinking about, we need to bring it down as, to make it as revenue neutral as we can.
So...
And that's what we need to do. And we might not be able to do it tonight, hold on tonight, but we need to discuss that.
Well, yes, and that's why I'm, you know, second this motion because I'm, and I know this is, I think this is healthy, we'll be having this discussion and getting some input here from these people. But Mr., you know, Chief Shute got me thinking, you know, it's going up 100%. Okay, so we gotta get it down to less, get it back to that 0% instead of that 100%, at least. But that's my problem. The number you threw out, is that doing that? I don't, okay, see, that's, that's what Mr. Keller said, put your thinking caps on. I got my thinking cap on, but I can't think all of it right now because I don't, I can't make a good decision unless I get on my numbers right.
We're gonna have to write some numbers.
Okay. But what I heard tonight is you want the tax relief and we gotta figure out what is that tax release and when we're gonna bring that number. And that's what I'm getting at. And I see what you're doing, John, but I just wanna make sure we make an informative, good decision for the people of Nottaway, you know, to make sure we make, you know, make it right.
Well, it, all of this, the timing is awful because the mistake was made and that was discovered. Plus, the value of the used cars are going up at the same time.
Yeah.
And that's something we didn't expect. And of course, we don't want to put the burden on the constituents. I mean, I don't wanna pay it. I mean, mine's gonna go up too, just like everybody else's. And I don't wanna pay it. But we need to make a decision to be fair to the constituents and look out for them. Because they rely on us to do that and that's what we need to do.
I agree with everything you're saying. There was one email that came in that struck a chord with me. Talking about the PPTR correction. This is a government-caused problem that you now seek to remedy on the backs of taxpayers. And that, you know, we needed to take some responsibility, the government did, and maybe build in spending cuts and do what we needed to do, rate adjustments to take care of this.
So, if we adjust the PPTRs, let's say we get with Christie and we sit down and do some math and get our thinking caps on and we reduce the PPTR, you don't have to have another public hearing for that because that's reduction in something, right? Mr. Costin, am I saying that right? So, we've had our public hearing and now before, and then we figure that number out and then we pull it up for, then you still have to put it up for a vote.
At this point, you can lower any rate or the PPTR, but you cannot raise...
Okay, and it's obvious, we wouldn't get out this dang on courtroom if I say somebody raising something right now. So, yeah, I don't think sheriffs have got enough guns back there. All right, so can I speak freely to Mr....
Sure.
Again, we put a motion on the floor and I second, so we have a good discussion. Would you be willing, if we didn't vote, to get another session and get in a room with Ms. Hudson and see how we get that number down, that 100% down and be fair for the taxpayers?
Right, yeah.
And we're pulling money out of reserves?
Right.
I get that, to balance the budget.
Right, now, just so y'all know, I think y'all understand the email barrage. I won't apologize for that. I thought it was the right thing to do and I'm gracious for the citizens for doing that.
I'm not gonna accept it because there was a lot of emails. I saw what you did. I saw it on Facebook. I know who did.
Yeah, okay, so the target was, to me, was below 335. I didn't think the board would go there without the support of the citizens. I'm just gonna be honest with you, okay? But my target was always 315. That's why. And even Mr. Costin went and got me a dry erase board because I was gonna write some numbers down because sometimes I'm more visual and wanna write some numbers down to make sure that I'm getting my ignorance together and so to present it to y'all in a respectful manner. Now, can I ask this question before I withdraw my motion? What type of a timeframe are we talking about to get this information together to be able to bring this back and notify the public? Because we're also on a deadline of September 1st.
I'm all right if we, I don't, I gotta talk to the Madam Chair. You run it a bit. I'm, you know, we can begin tomorrow. Don't make any difference on Friday. Don't make any difference to me.
I believe we have to continue this meeting. Or you do have a meeting Monday night that's been advertised as a special meeting to address broadband. I believe we can add to that agenda.
Is that Monday night?
Monday night, the 15th. And that was to address the broadband issue and act on that grant application? Now, there's a couple ways we can do this.
Now, there's a couple ways we can do this. I kind of anticipated this, so we talked with counsel today. You can amend the agenda Monday night if every single member is here and agrees to amend the agenda. Or Ms. Kelly will go back to the office this evening and notice it up as an addition to the advertised agenda. But it has to be done by midnight tonight.
And let me say this to the public. All of us, every last member of this board is very concerned. We do listen to our citizens, and we have listened to them over a period of time. We are concerned about this. This was thrown on us. And I think it has, all over the state supervisors, they are calling me from different places. They are dealing with the same problem that we have. Mr. Costin and I had talked about a 40, from going from 375 to 335 about a month ago. And so something that has been on our minds, we have thought about, and we have listened. I've listened to a lot of people, not only those from our district, but some from all over the county have come to me and talked to me. So I want you all to know that we are concerned, and we are going to do something about this.
And, you know, to piggyback on that, Madam Chair, I want to thank you in front of the public. You know, and I believe it, but, you know, she's done, she's reached out to a lot of counties, and I see emails, and I got some phone calls too. So, Ms. Shuckleton, you've done a lot of work behind the scenes because you're trying to do the right thing. And, you know, John, you know, he threw us out to the, he threw us out there, buddy. And, but he did it for a reason, and I get that too. But I don't want the public to know, Ms. Shuckleton, you did a lot of work, and Mr. Costin as well, in a lot of discussions, and we hear you. And, well, let's do the right thing, make sure we get the right number. And it's, and Ms. Hudson, can you help us with that? You know, okay, okay.
You can run alternatives to keep us as close to revenue neutral as possible then.
Madam Chair, I withdraw my motion to the continuation of this meeting.
So we'll be adjourning rather than continuing since we'll be adding, amending the agenda, is that correct?
What's the board's, we could actually conduct the, you can continue this meeting to the 15th to follow, immediately follow the advertised special meeting for the broadband. That's how I would do it.
And we don't need, we don't need a motion for that, I don't believe.
Yeah, I think you do need a motion to continue the meeting.
Okay.
To, I would phrase it to, to the date of the 15th, the time being immediately following the conclusion of the special meeting to consider broadband.
I make that motion, that's a move.
And I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
All right, thank you.
Leading, thank you.